Item number one, which is consistent with what we see on the screen here, is the travel accommodations, the hotel section. Mr. Clough, is there a possibility you could bring up there? You just did it. Well done. This does give us a little bit more detail specifically on the hotel section. Who would like to start us off on the conversation in this section? Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Lassio. Mr. Clough, could you refresh us on the data that was used to come to the determination of 1.0 versus 1.25?
Absolutely, Chair Lassio, Commissioner Scarborough, and members of the commission. So, over the last, you know, several years, as hotel developments have been coming through the process for development in Old Town Scottsdale, almost all of them have come through with parking master plans requesting reductions in their per-room requirement. Most of what we've seen is that there are some justifications that demonstrate that less than a .8 is required. We've seen some around, you know, .5, .6 that would accommodate that. However, there's a lot of different models out there, and it's been pretty consistent that has been coming through the process that a .8 was the kind of the baseline that has been accepted through those reviews and those parking master plans that have been provided and ran through the Planning Commission and City Council. So, the reason that this is not all the way down to a .8, but instead is at a .1, is, as I previously mentioned, that this is also applicable to outside of Old Town. So, there's a lot of different hotel business models out there that are more of your resort style hotels that a less than a .1 may not be appropriate. So, that's kind of where we got to the .1 there. And then, there's still the opportunity for a parking master plan to be submitted and request a reduction beyond the 1.0 if appropriate.
So, within the data, I heard you reference models. Within these plans, parking plans that you're reviewing from previous projects, was there surveyed information provided in those, or is it just theoretical modeling?
Commissioner Scarborough, when I mentioned model, that was not intended to be related to a study model, but instead a more of a business model. So, different hotel types based on room counts and associated conference area, meeting facilities, and ancillary commercial uses.
So, just to make sure I'm asking this appropriately, I'm curious to understand, within these parking studies, the derived number is come to by actually having surveyed information of existing uses in the vicinity?
Commissioner Scarborough and members of the commission, that's correct. Those studies typically include a range of data, including national data and local data, usually including parking counts specific to hotel developments in Scottsdale that are comparable to the type that's being proposed.
Okay. And then, just a clarification, as we're talking about this, we're talking about private parking, not public parking. And so, the intent here is that this travel use would self-park and not be a burden to public parking. And so, even with the reduction to 1.0, staff does not foresee a negative impact to public parking in the vicinity?
Commissioner Scarborough and members of the commission, that's correct.
And within that 1.0 number, employee parking is considered?
Correct.
Can you, I'd like to dial into this a little bit. How is employee parking considered in the, without using a master, parking master plan, but in the simple equation of changing from 1.25 to 1.0? How is employee parking considered?
Commissioner Scarborough and members of the commission, historically, the per-room requirement for the hotel has always intended to account for employees that are associated with the hotel. Staff typically does not get into the details of which parking spaces that are associated with a hotel are required for employees or guests, or the associated commercial uses, aside from what those additional requirements would be per the ordinance. Based on the data that we've received through parking master plans that are justifying reductions in this base requirement, those, the studies within those account for employee parking as well. So, we feel comfortable that this 1.0 ratio is rather conservative in that it's been demonstrated that the .8 ratio, and in some cases, lower than that sufficiently accounts for the full demand.
And based on the data you have, what are you seeing? You're saying .8 covers peak demand, but from the data you're seeing, where is peak demand typically coming in for hotel uses?
Are you referring to time of day and day of week?
Not at all. I'm speaking generally, so I would assume I'm, let me rephrase that. I guess I'm looking for peak demand. So, whatever peak may be for that industry.
Commissioner Scarborough, members of the commission, if you're referring to looking at maybe a number of different hotels and picking out the one that requires the most, then I think that is what we would be referring to as the .8, in that we feel that the .8 would accommodate all of those cases, and in some cases, would, less than a .8 would be appropriate.
Okay. So, my thoughts here, and I guess I'll just throw out my thought, is that I can understand the 1.0 being conservative. The .8 sounds like it covers maximum use potential there. And to me, if employee parking is already accounted for in the 1.0, I would like to see something in this amendment that clarifies that there has to be designated parking for employees at peak demand of employees. So, it can park 1.0, but aside from the parking master plans, just in this base understanding, I would like to see language that quantifies the number of employees at peak demand and that be included in, not in addition to the 1.0, to ensure that employee parking, when it's at its peak, is not burdening public parking.
So, you're saying in addition to the 1.0 for part, for public, for employee parking? Is that what I heard?
Not in addition to.
Not?
It just needs to be specifically accounted for. So, designated spots is one of my thoughts here that needs to be addressed.
Gotcha.
As part of this text amendment. Also, with this understanding that developments can use a parking master plan to further reduce the number to .8, I personally don't have an objection to this. I would, though, however, amend this text amendment to allow staff only a 10% variance, and any variance above that, up to the 20%, would be reviewed by the appropriate board or council. And those are, right now, my only comments, but I'd like to hear what my other commissioners have on this topic.
Very good. I know Commissioner Otteau has a comment. Just, I want to just ask one additional question, Commissioner Otteau, if you'll allow me, that kind of goes with your comment, and it really is for Mr. Clough. Mr. Clough, understanding that we're talking about private parking here, and we're talking about doing a 1.0 per room, is there any contemplation within our code that states, within the parking amendments here, that states that this parking would be at no cost to the employee, or at no additional cost to the hotel guest? Because I could see that a downtown hotel that charges $25 a day for an employee, or $25 a day for a guest, those people may save that $25 per day and park in one of our free parking structures that we have that might be very close and adjacent to, and they would use the free public parking, and then we would have a private parking structure that was nearly empty, and we would be using our free public parking to accommodate employees and guests. So, does any of this contemplate cost associated with private parking?
Chair Lassio and members of the commission, there's not anything in the new that's in the ordinance. However, there already is a requirement in the code specific to downtown that all required parking needs to be free. So, that would also apply to these hotels.
So, required parking for employees, or required parking for guests as well?
Both.
It would include all of the above.
Okay. So, this would be free parking. So, we would not be basically pushing guests and employees to our free public parking? There would be no incentive, if you will, for them to move to the free public parking, based on what we see here today? Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Chair Lassio. I am sure learning a lot from my fellow commissioners, and I appreciate Mr. Clough's presentation. We are learning a lot. We're also learning what we don't know. There's a lot we don't know. I think there is also a lot that we do know. And I wanted to ask Mr. Clough if he would answer a few questions, if he would humor me here? And if I could start with the, because I think that, and I kind of agree with Commissioner Otteau, I mean, the, so, we're talking about hotels, and reduction from 1.25 to a 1.0, that on the papers, that on paper sounds reasonable, but it's, there's kind of some other stuff going on there. And one of the things I wanted to ask about was this variance, this administrative variance that Commissioner Scarborough actually brought up. And first, my first question, Mr. Clough, is how long has that variance, that administrative variance been in place? If you may or may not, may or may not know the history of that?
Chair Lassio, Commissioner Graham, I don't know off the top of my head when that was first put into place. I do know, you know, as far back as I've been dealing with it, which would be at least the last 10 years, I believe that's been in place.
What is the, let me back up here. What, so, there's some sort of application or something, and I'm also kind of looking at Mr. Padilla here. There's some kind of application that the applicant can make that to request a 20% reduction or abatement in the parking requirements? Is that correct?
Yes, Chair Lassio and Commissioner Graham, the code allows parking reductions through a parking master plan. So, this would be the same document that would go to City Council and Planning Commission for requests that are more than 20%. However, with that same plan and parking analysis, the code allows staff to administratively provide up to a 20% reduction.
Do you know, in just the Old Town area or the downtown area, do you know the average number, right now, kind of the average number of rooms that would be required for the exist, under the existing parking code? I'm trying to get a sense of what 20%, how many spots that is.
All right. Can I please clarify, are you saying the average number of rooms for a hotel?
No, I'm saying, what would on paper be the average number of required spots before any administrative reduction in the, in the, in the Old Town area? Because the, asking for the average number of rooms is, well, it's like, it's 1.25 for this, or 1 point, or 2 for that. I'm trying to get a sense of how, how many spots in the, in a typical, how many parking spots in a downtown hotel does 20% mean?
Sure. If I can, I can try to help clarify that. So, if you're looking at a hotel that's, you know, somewhere around 165 to 170 rooms, at the 1.25, you're looking at about 210 spaces that would be required there. Reducing that to a 1.0 would be 160 to 170 spaces. So, you're looking at about a reduction of about 40 spaces in that scenario.
That's, I mean, I think the average person would probably say that's pretty significant. I suppose my question is, is, do you, what percentage of, in the downtown area, do hotels request that variance? Is that like a kind of a perfunctory, like it's a given they all request it, or is it more of an exception?
Commissioner Graham, what I can say is, over, you know, I would say over the last four to five years, I believe almost all of them have requested a parking reduction through the use of a parking master plan in the Old Town area.
Okay. And all of them. And you know what the quantities say in the last five years of hotels that have been added? Like 10 or 5, or, pardon my ignorance?
Yeah, I apologize, Commissioner Graham. I don't, I don't have the specific number, but, you know, I think it's in, reasonably in the 5 to 10 range.
And they've, and they've all requested the variance?
Correct, to the best of my knowledge.
Have, of those 5 to 10 applicants that have requested the variance, how many has, how many have been administratively denied?
Commissioner Graham, members of the commission, I have, I was not personally involved in all of those. I'm not aware of any that have been denied. There's different, different ranges of requests based on each specific scenario. So, you know, rather than a denial, it would have probably been negotiated to a lesser reduction that would be more in line with the specific requirements for that particular development.
Okay. So, that's, that's a guess how hypothetically it would have gone, but can you say for certain if any, if, can you say, have any been totally denied, or have, they've all been accommodated to some degree? Is that correct?
Commissioner Graham, I can't personally say for certain either of those. We have other staff on the line, and Tim Curtis as well, if they are aware of anything there, they might have additional information to add. But me personally, I can't answer that for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. I don't know if you happen to know that answer off the top of your head?
No, unfortunately, I don't off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
So, it seems, though, that, well, we all, I mean, we heard Mr. Clough say that between the 5 to 10 in the past five years, every single one, every single hotel has requested the administrative reduction, parking reduction. And I think it kind of seems like they've all gotten it, maybe. Not for sure, but maybe. So, it's kind of, to me, it kind of feels like we moved this from .1, 1.25 to 1, we are moving it closer to .8. The other side of that is that I wanted to talk about next, is the 5,000-square-foot exemption? Can we talk a little bit about that, Mr. Clough? Sounded like I was interrogating you.
Absolutely, Mr. Graham, Commissioner Graham. And before we get into that, I noticed Randy Grant has his hand raised. Can we allow an opportunity for Randy Grant to provide some input?
Please. We would love for Randy Grant to provide some, some input. Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I believe that all of the hotel reductions have been approved, and the reason is because I think it's almost universally accepted that 1.25 is more than is needed, given the rise of Uber and Lyft and alternative transportations, and you don't have rental cars being as prevalent as they were five years ago, because ride-sharing has kind of taken that share of the market. But I also want to say, parking isn't an exact science, and to some extent, it's based on averages. If we look at the city of Tempe, their parking conditions are much, much different, because when new projects come in, they really don't care if you provide parking for them, because they want to sell you spaces in the parking garages that the public has paid for and built, and that they charge people to use. So, the conditions with national comparisons is also very difficult, because anybody that goes to San Francisco knows that you pay $50 a night to park your car, or you don't park. There's no parking on the street, per se, and so, they get away with, with charging a lot. We also know that, to some extent, parking is a matter of convenience. And if I can park on the street rather than park in a garage, I might well do it, even though a space is provided in the garage. But, and I want to have total respect for the people that do business in downtown, and I think sometimes they feel like the staff is working on behalf of the developer, or that the City Council is not considering their, the conditions that they bring up, and that's absolutely not true. We have to provide a balance, and at current costs, providing 20 additional spaces would cost a property owner $1 million. It's about $50,000 a space to provide parking. So, in the interest of getting redevelopment and revitalization to occur, we don't really want people to provide a lot of extra parking. We'd like to be conservative and make sure that places are parking themselves, but we're also not going to be able to park for the day after Thanksgiving, which is not a current example. But, but if you park a shopping center for the day after Thanksgiving for 364 days, you've got a lot of empty parking spaces. And so, we have to be aware that there is a balance between inviting and accepting opportunities for revitalization, and the costs that are incurred with taking advantage of those opportunities. One thing that we always try to consider in downtown parking is what's an acceptable walking distance? And if we look at two blocks as being an acceptable walking distance, we did the, the exercise of looking at radius around the parking structures that are available, and two blocks is about as far as you have to walk to get to public parking. In, in the West Main example, the parking lot for the Stage Press Theater and the old America West lot are less than two blocks away from most of the businesses. Now, it's true that some of the businesses, some people will go to a business, and if they can't park right in front, they might leave. But again, we can't make parking convenient in all instances, but we can make sure that there's an adequate supply for most people, and most people are willing to walk a half block or a block to, to parking. So, I, I'm sorry to belabor that point, but I, you had expressed frustration that you didn't have the answers, and you're not alone. There really aren't any right answers. We're trying to make sure that there's adequate parking in most circumstances, on most days, not necessarily on Art Walk Night when there is a game going on. We're going to have conditions where there are shortages, but we're trying to provide parking accessible to most people on the, on the lion's share of the days when the use is required. And what we're seeing is changing conditions every few months. A year ago, we would not have anticipated the change to the way people are using hotel parking. So, a year from now, it may be different. And I agree with you, we don't have the data to support building a whole lot of new public parking. And I think this, this application tonight is, is simply based on our experience in providing parking for project-related demand. And people have brought up, you need to have guest parking. We completely agree. But outside of downtown, there are dozens and dozens of multifamily complexes, and we get very few complaints about not having available parking. We agree that there should be guest parking provided outside of gates where it's accessible. But again, in the interest of revitalization, we don't want to be dramatically exaggerated in the amount of parking that's required, because that will have the, the effect of discouraging reinvestment. I apologize for going on, Mr. Chairman, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. We always appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
Commissioner Graham, do you still have some more strong thoughts?
Oh, Mr. Chair, is it okay if I continue with my questions?
Please.
Oh, wow. Thank you. And we always, like, you know, like the chair said, we always appreciate Mr. Grant coming on and talking to us. Mr. Grant, if you could still hear me, I don't know if he disconnected or not, I don't know if he or may or may not know off the top of his head about that question that I had, that no one was unsure of the answer, whether administratively in the last five years, they have approved, because they're, all the, all the hotel, downtown hotels have requested, and they, he said, I think he said, if I understand, they have all approved the administrative exception?
That is correct. Not all have been 20%.
Okay. No, thank you very much. I wanted to ask, I don't know who, I don't know whom I'm going to ask, I'll assume I go back to Mr. Clough, but I'm always pleased to hear from Mr. Grant. I wanted to ask about this 5,000-square-foot exemption. And does that, does that basically kind of mean that every hotel is 5,000 square, when it comes to parking requirements, that every hotel is 5,000 square feet smaller?
Chair Lassio and Commissioner Graham, the idea behind the 5,000-square-foot exemption would be, you know, geared towards those ancillary commercial uses like conference space or restaurants that are within the same building as the hotel.
Okay.
And, and the 5,000 square feet, that first 5,000 wouldn't require parking, because at that size, you know, based on some other hotels throughout the city that we looked at, we'd anticipate that's not large enough to, to have a real, real draw, larger, larger events, or your destination-type facilities that are, that are going to have a more of a local draw, that are kind of bringing people who need to park, they'd be geared more towards, catering towards the residents, or the folks that are in the hotel.
Because we, when we look, when we think about these parking requirements for hotels, that is kind of, you think about that as like per, per key, per room. That doesn't reduce the number of rooms. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Graham.
Okay. So, if a room, if a, if a hotel has 200 rooms, it's, that's not going to cut away from that. Is that going to reduce the required parking, though, that 5,000, that 5,000-square-foot exemption in any other way? Like, I guess only, does that, what counts is, do like, does like a restaurant count towards that exemption, or some other sort of commercial use that's categorically different?
Yes, Commissioner Graham, a hotel that maybe that had a ground-floor restaurant within it that was less than 5,000 square feet would be able to have that restaurant and park it just based on the per-room requirement of 1.0 spaces per, per key.
So, you could have, you could have a 3,000-square-foot lobby, or a 2,000-square-foot lobby and a 3,000-square-foot restaurant, and you wouldn't have to provide a single parking spot?
Not for the, not specific to those uses. It's anticipated that the parking provided for the number of rooms in the facility would accommodate the needs associated with that space.
What do you, what, as far as, because I know that, Mr. Clough, you and your colleagues have studied this so much, what, is that, is that practice, do, and I know that you looked at other comparison cities around the valley. Do other cities have that exemption?
Commissioner Graham, I, we didn't specifically pull data from other cities relative to hotels. The, the data that we were working with was based on existing hotel developments within the city of Scottsdale.
Are you aware of any other cities that have an exemption like that?
I can't specifically say off the top of my head.
Mr. Curtis, are you aware of any that have, any sort of exemption like that?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Graham, not specifically, but we are aware that different cities have different parking requirements for hotels that may include additional parking for auxiliary uses, and oftentimes do not. You could imagine some of the limited-service hotels having some adjunct conference space, but it's not- hotels having some adjunct conference space, but it's not something that is a highly demanding space. But it could be around 5,000 square feet. There's cafes, as well as some retail, that is typically not parked in hotels.
Yeah, you think about what the kinds of, you know, I mean, special events, conference rooms, cafes, coffee, coffee houses, restaurants, et cetera. I just, because that 5,000, there's no exemption, anything, that, that's completely new. That would be completely new in the parking code. Is that correct? That's kind of a new idea that's been introduced.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Grant?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Clough. Thank you.
Commissioner Graham, members of the commission, you're, you're correct, the exemption is new. However, also new with this amendment is clarification of the requirements that are required for these ancillary uses. What we've seen historically with hotels that have coming, have been coming through and requesting parking reductions through a parking master plan, these reduction, or these hotels also include ancillary commercial uses, restaurant, meeting facilities. And usually, those facilities are also included within the study, and a lot of times, either do not require any additional parking requirement or are reduced based on that study. So a lot of times, when we're talking about a .8, or in some cases, less than a .8, that is based on the parking analysis provided, is supplying parking for those ancillary uses as well.
So I appreciate that response. The, that seems, that seems like an entirely, I, I guess, let me, I'll just back up a little bit, and I think I've probably come close to the conclusion of my questions for the hotels. The, I, I think it makes so much sense to, I think the 1.25 is excessive. We've seen, we've seen new technologies, we've seen new trends. I understand my fellow commissioners, they, we pretty much all agree, you know, parking study right now is not going to sample, is not going to be a good sample. We, we also all agree that there's, there's a problem. There's, there's an issue. We can, it's, it's obvious. The one, if I can quote Commissioner Ortel, reduction from the 1.2, if that's okay, if I quote you. I've been given permission. The one, that makes sense. That's, it just makes sense. And, but it seems like we're also doing stuff to kind of sort of chip away at it. I don't know if maybe that's the right term, but the 5,000 square foot exemption, that doesn't seem like anybody else is doing that. And nobody here is really sure if they are, and that's okay. But it seems like, that seems kind of like something you would do if you're trying to promote development. And we want Scottsdale to be uniquely Scottsdale. We, we want Scottsdale to be Scottsdale. And I don't know how that exemption there, which 5,000 square feet isn't a tiny amount of space, to have zero parking accommodated or provided, and then to, it, it just doesn't seem, that seems like something that you would, you would, you would do when you want to spur development. Instead of, we, I think that most people here would say, we want to make sure that Scottsdale gets, you know, Scottsdale quality development. And so I look at that, and I kind of wonder. I also, I also have questions, and I ask many of my questions about the 20% waiver. I, 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 I mean, there's other things you could ask about that, and we don't need to go into that here. I think, you know, Commissioner Scarborough had, had a great idea as far as maybe moving that to 10%, maybe 5%, something like that. But kind of looking at that, 20%, we talked about 20% for a hotel that requires 200-something rooms, you're going to off the top, and we, at 40-something rooms just vanish, or 40-something parking spots just vanish. And then you have, you know, the, then you have the 5%, the 5,000 square foot exemption. So I think it just raises a lot of questions. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will return it to you. Thank you for allowing me to ask those questions. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome, Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Lassio. Commissioner Graham brought up some interesting points, and I think maybe to help the conversation in a dialogue format, just so we're all aware, that the exemption of the 5,000 square feet would be at the 1.0, not the .8. Anything below 1.0 would require the parking master plan. So even if they had the 4,999 square feet of additional space, to get anything less than 1.0, they would have to do a parking master plan and have that go through the appropriate approval process. So I can understand the concern. I don't, I, I think there's one level of chipping away we're doing here, or considering, is the 1.25 down to 1. Once you get to the 1.0, and you go below that, you're going to have to prove yourself. And to me, my, my desire to have employee parking included in that 1.0, is designated, would even account for, if we have a 2,000 square foot restaurant in there, and now they have two cooks and, and two waitresses and a bartender, that's five more people. What I'm asking for to have done is now five more employee parking spots accounted for, from my recommendation. So just in the spirit of conversation, I just wanted to discuss that a little bit. That's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarborough. Any other comments, questions, input? Commissioner Young?
Thank you.
Vice Chair Young. Sorry. I'm struggling with that, and that's my fault, but I'm going to get to it.
I keep forgetting myself.
Yeah. Okay, good. Vice Chair Young.
I just want to reinforce what Commissioner Scarborough just said about the employee parking, because, you know, when, when I drive to my office in the morning, I'm there, you know, 7:00, 7:30, when I'm arriving and leaving 5:30, 6:00, whenever it might be. And I would say that employee parking, or employees, I'm seeing as the biggest offenders as not parking on hotel properties. I see a lot of people being dropped off, parking in adjacent private property parking lots, and parking on public parking stalls. And they'll come out every two hours, move their car six inches, so the police officer with the white chalk doesn't match up again. So, you know, it's, I think the employee parking is, is very important to consider in this whole thing, not just guest parking. So with that, I'll yield back.
Do you know why they're moving their cars to their parking on properties? Are they being charged for parking, or is there, are they being told not to park there, or are they just, is not any spaces available?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I just see it on a daily basis, and know that it's, it is an issue. At least, at least at certain hotels in the downtown area. I can't speak for all of them, but, you know, from what I see on a daily basis, the employee parking is, it just doesn't seem to be enough. So, and, and again, I don't know if that's across the board, all hotels, but I, I think that there are some in the downtown area that, that do have that, that issue.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Chair Young.